Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, November 10th at 6:30 PM. We'd like to make note of all councilors present, with the exception of Councilor Johnston, who was excused this evening, and we do have with us interim city manager Emily Cole Prescott. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four under General, we do not have anything this evening. Item five, Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any committee members wishing to speak? Counselor Hewitt?
First, the Arts Committee would like me to let you know, Saco has a new colorful addition that we look forward to sharing with you. The Saco Arts Commission is in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department, hired an artist to install a mural on the side of the Parks Maintenance Building on Franklin Street. Local artist Spencer McLeod made a playful colorful piece that is sure to make visitors of every age smile. Spencer should be finished with the installation at the end of this week, and an unveiling event will be planned soon. Also, the Dyer Library asked me to share, they will be hosting the Festival of Trees again this year. There will be a preview tea Saturday, November 22nd, from 1:00 to 3:00. Tickets are $25. The Festival of Trees Gala will also be November 22nd, from 6:30 to 8:30. Tickets, $25. And the festival will be open to the public from November 28th to December 28th.
Thank you very much. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Eight Friendly Saco would like me to remind people, if you need a sand bucket to help with ice this winter, this, November 15th, Eight Friendly Saco and Thornton Academy students will be delivering sand buckets to anyone that wishes to have one. If you would like to have a bucket delivered to you, please call the office at (207) 710-5029 to be added to the list for delivery. And please note that these are only delivered to people that are 55 years old and above. Also, from Saco Main Street, November is a busy month, there'll be three things happening. On Saturday, November 29th, Saco Buck Saturday, you can come down and get Saco Bucks and spend money locally here on Main Street. It's always appreciated by the business owners as well as folks here, so, and they go quick. Last year, I think they sold through $500 worth of Saco Bucks. On the next day, November 30th, which is a Sunday, there's Main Street Market, which will be in the Thornton Academy Gym. It's always a popular event, and it's presented by Renewal by Anderson. And December 5th, there's a holiday tree lighting, I believe, at the train station, and I'll be there, and other notables will be there as well, so if you want to see us or just see a Christmas tree lit up, show up on December 5th.
Great, thank you. And yes, so Saturday, the 29th, is Small Business Saturday. If you are not in Saco to get your Saco Bucks, no matter where you are, remember to shop local. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to item number six, that is Public Comment. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Sandy Gay, I am a Saco resident, 52 Cumberland Ave. Excuse me. I'm here to speak tonight about the proposed amendments to Administrative Code Article 7, 434. I know you're not taking action on that tonight, but I still wanted to just come and speak to the board about that. As many of you know, I am a layman use attorney, have been for about 25 years. I represent applicants in front of the boards, I represent opponents in front of the boards, I represent municipalities when there is a conflict with a municipal attorney. I've also served on a planning board for 20 years, 10 in the town of Lyman, 10 in the city of Saco when I moved to Saco. I can appreciate the frustration that people have with these meetings, and I understand, and I don't make light of any of that, but I will have to say that in all my years, I have never seen a municipality overreact to something the way these draft amendments suggest. With all due respect, and I do mean that to the drafters of this proposed code amendments, there are several issues, and I would strongly suggest the council not adopt these amendments when the time comes. First, the first one is that it's very likely an equal rights violation. You're treating one set of citizens differently than any other citizen, and that's just not permitted. It's a constitutional violation under Equal Rights Act. Secondly, just because somebody is a real estate broker does not mean they had a stake in a development proposal. What about bankers? What about architects? What about soil scientists? What about engineers? What about lawn maintenance people? What about plumbers and electricians and lawyers? Are they all also going to be denied a chair position because they might at some day or some future day have something to do with the development? Third, the code already has a provision that no more than two members of a board shall have a same full-time occupation. That's in your code already. There's a method and a place for recusals. This is used if there's a conflict of bias, and it includes situations when a person serving on a board is employed by the same place as an applicant or somebody representing an applicant, whether that person is an attorney, an engineer, or some other person. This works. I've never seen this not work. The board member recuses themselves. On those rare occasions when there could be, somebody should recuse themselves and they don't recuse themselves, there's an appeal process for that. It's already in the law. The law also already defines what is biased and what is conflict in terms of municipal boards. The MMA or your municipal attorney should be training new board members about that. Lastly, this city has a uniquely wonderful, robust code of ethics and conduct, and this includes a section that provides, when board members who repeatedly or intentionally do not follow proper conduct, whether outside of, or before, or during, or after their public meetings, they may be sanctioned by the mayor, including removal from the board committee or commission with cause. The mayor may administer counseling, verbal reprimands, written warnings, or suspensions to a board committee and commission members feeling to comply with this policy. This is the way these things should get handled, each individual on their own merit. In my 10 years on the Saco Planning Board, I actually saw this in action one time, when there was one board member who was treating both applicants and members of the public in a way that was not appropriate. That board member was asked to leave the board, and they did. Again, the proposed amendments are at best unnecessary and at worst unconstitutional and unfair. I realize the vote's not this evening, however, I strongly urge the council not to pass this amendment when the time comes, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I really appreciate Mrs. Gay's opinion and your due diligence and your preparation of all the materials. Absolutely spot on, and I can agree with many of those items. However, I am on the other side, contrasting opinion. I was one of the cofilers of the grievance and also bringing forth the call to actions. This was over a good three-and-a-half-year period while the grievances were being drafted, and then it took a year, and then it took another year, and now it's taken another year to get to this point. So, with that said, again, I thank Mrs. Gay for definitely her thoughts and your consideration. I am a retired real estate broker. This is about me. That's why this came up, in the sense of what I was witnessing during that time years ago. Why this position should be absolutely free from the appearance of impropriety perceived or real. Adhering to two code of ethics, the city and our license, one should be held at a higher standard of integrity, fairness, and reputation. Even if no wrongdoing occurs, we should never place ourselves in a position of damaging the city's reputation and undermining public trust. At exception of the preparing of the grievances, I thought outside the box, and the perception of becoming a broker on record of 20 units or 300 units after chairing a planning board application's approval, either still as an appointee or through my resignation, my conclusion was and is that my choice could definitely harm an administration by the perceived or real optics of doing so. Why would I do that to me, to you, to fellow board members, to other Realtors or those that I serve? I would just be honored to be a part of a full, be a part or full-time or retired licensed Realtor appointed to the planning board. Another concern is witnessing a chair inadvertently stating future actions of a pending standalone application, thereby intimating and implying bias and partiality of a forthcoming approval. At the time of preliminary subdivisions, deliberations, references were made and are continuing to be made, that hearings, deliberations are also out of sight plan. It's standalone. As a planning board appointee with a conflict, I could recuse myself from an agenda item, and I would not be running the meeting. How could a chair or vice chair, who does run the meeting, recuse themselves on an even once or a continuous basis? And why did I not consider other professions in that seat? In the above example, in today's market, I could earn approximately one quarter to millions of dollars as a broker of record, and Maine is a dual-agency sit-state, where I could represent both the seller and the buyer, earning even more, avoid the optics. And also, as far as lastly on the amendments, on new business item B, 4D, you are better served to remove the word brokers. There's different classifications, sales agent, associate broker, and broker. If you remove the brokers, main real estate license would suffice. I agree with the language in 4E, however, be mindful, as many developers and construction people also hold a main real estate license, so you might be limiting between the two first options.
30 seconds over.
Okay, two lines, 4F, if I could. Thank you. 4F, remove the word brokers as in 4D, and paragraph six, I agree, yet that's a tough one. A suggestion perhaps, limit the size of the law firm, as Saco uses larger firms, we may then be limiting ourselves too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, that is the approval of the minutes for October 20th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion or comment on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to item eight, and that is consent items this evening. There are two. Item A is the application for a license to operate Bino Bingo for the BPOE 1597, and item B is the council schedule for January, February, and March of 2026. Any items needing to be removed, or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, item nine tonight, action items. There are two. Item A is the first reading, the proposed updates to Administrative Code, Chapter 4, Article 5, Departments and Division, and that is Counselor Hatch this evening.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. On August 25th, September 8th, and October 20th, city staff presented proposed updates to Chapter 4, Article 5, Departments and Divisions of City Ordinance, along with a crosswalk document for reference. The purpose of this initiative is to update the ordinance to reflect current operations. For reference purposes, the link to the current code section is available here at The review process for this item beyond first reading is as follows. We'll have a public hearing with city council, and then a final reading with city council. Be it ordered that the city council, Saco City Council approves the first reading of the updates to Administrative Code, Chapter 4, Article 5, Departments and Divisions, and further moves to schedule its public hearing on November 24th, 2025, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion or comments on this item? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I would just like to note, I had submitted back in September, September 4th, some suggested changes. It looks like all of those have pretty much worked their way in. There was a couple of language changes to the introductory paragraph that I suggested would be on page, introductory paragraph to 4-13, where we indicate that the city administrator shall serve as a chief administrative officer and is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. So that change, I would ask be made on that document. And I think I had a couple of minor suggested edits, they just suggested edits that I didn't see, so maybe they were determined to be unnecessary, but I'm just going down the list of, I think it was 16 items I provided in that September 4th memorandum. So item eight, nine, 12 were, was language suggestions that I didn't see in the document, but again, I would reserve judgment. If they're not that appropriate, I would not have a problem with not seeing them. And then finally, I'll have to speak for my colleague, Counselor Johnson, who's not here this evening. He did submit an email on October 20th, which recommended some changes to Chapter 4. I did not go back and personally check whether or not those made their way into the document, but I would just ask the interim city administrator to make sure that they have been reviewed, which I believe they have, and when you come forward for our next discussion that they be in there. Thank you.
I did triple-check those items provided by Counselor Johnson, and I'd be happy to send him the draft and make sure it does capture what he needed before we go into public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to item B, that is the public hearing for amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Appendices, and that is Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, a main municipal association presents municipalities with new appendices for their city ordinance, which need to be reviewed and adopted. I move to open the public hearing for amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program Appendices, and MMA General Assistance Ordinance.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 5-0 at 6:49. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing on amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program Appendices, and MMA General Assistance Ordinance, and further move to schedule the second and final reading for November 17th, 2025. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, that completes the action items this evening. Moving on to new business, item number 10. Item A is a follow-up from the Saco Citizen Grievance Review Committee update on recommendation number five, City of Saco Purchasing Policy and RFPs.
Thank you. Just a brief update from my desk. We have engaged a We have engaged a representative who has a lot of experience in finance. He ran a finance department before he retired. He is working through the Maine Municipal Association, so he's actually hired out of MMA by the City of Saco. And he is working on updates to our purchasing policy that were brought forward by not only the Grievance Review Committee, but also he's talking with senior staff, City Hall, as well as financial staff. And he will be coming here to make a presentation in mid-December. So I just want to give an update on where we're at. We're moving as quickly as we can, so there's a lot to consider. We want to be holistic, as holistic as possible when we bring this back to you for a presentation. So that's where things are at at this very moment, and I would anticipate, once we hear from the city council, we can wrap up those amendments and get it into a January agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Not seeing any. Moving on to item B, that's a follow-up from the Saco Citizens Grievance Review Committee, discussion on recommendation number one, Administrative Code Updates to Section 4-34. Do you want to start out with a quick overview?
Sure. This was, I was asked to prepare an item commentary for this so that it could be brought to new business for the council to discuss and to provide some input to staff on next steps. So that is what we are waiting to get some feedback from the council on. Thank you.
Okay, councilors, in the packet you do have a list of the items. Councilor Hatch?
Yes, being the only ad hoc committee member present here, I thought I'd just give a little brief introduction to this process, and we've heard some public comment this evening. And I've scripted it, so I want to make sure that I get everything covered appropriately, and I will provide the city administrator, deputy city administrator with copy here, and I like to make that part of the record. We all know that city council accepted the citizen grievance petition on December 16th, 2024, and thereby acknowledging the validity of all concerns raised therein. We're not beginning this process tonight to question the validity of the concerns expressed in the petition. Instead, we are here to start taking steps to effectively address the issues raised. Regarding item number one of the petition, we have been asked to suggest ordinance changes that reduce the risk, and I emphasize the appearance of a conflict of interest by preventing a sitting planning board member who is either a licensed real estate broker or an active real estate developer from serving as planning board chair or co-chair. We have received several public comments mistakenly believing that the recommendation aims to exclude licensed real estate agents and active real estate developers from serving on the planning board. That is clearly incorrect. I, along with many others, strongly believe that these types of real estate professionals provide valuable insights during the planning board application review process. I also believe that these individuals appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council, possess a high level of integrity and are capable of avoiding actual conflicts of interest. Otherwise, they would not have been appointed and confirmed. The concern is about the appearance of a conflict of interest in the role of planning board chair or co-chair. We currently have a citywide code of ethics, which was mentioned, designed to address genuine conflicts of interest. However, both actual and/or appearance conflicts can have significant financial consequences for the city of Saco's taxpayer when litigated in court. The Lincoln Village Project, which sparked this grievance petition, is a clear example of this. The appellant's appearance of a conflict of interest accusation against me and former planning board member Rob Biggs was quickly dismissed by the presiding business court judge as lacking any legal basis. Still, the cost of defending these frivolous accusations was borne by Saco's taxpayers. The Maine Municipal Association Manual for Local Planning Boards, a legal perspective which I believe all planning board members have to complete, states, and I quote, "A municipality may define what constitutes a conflict of interest by local charter or ordinance," close quote. And after doing some additional research, I found a very relevant summary of the challenges involved in managing the appearance of a conflict. Here's a direct quote from the American Planning Association Quick Notes Number Four, Conflicts of Interest for Planning Commissions. I quote, "A conflict of interest is a contradiction between individuals' personal interests and his or her public duty. Such conflicts can exist whether or not money is involved, and whether the conflict is actual or only perceived," close quote. The document goes on to say, quote, "Several studies have examined the occupations of members. Those studies show that some jurisdictions, when appointing commission members, seek people with professional or business familiarity, while other communities have unwritten guidelines precluding developers and realtors from sitting on the commission to help minimize potential appearance of conflicts of interest." And again, we're not proposing to eliminate them from participation. While an individual's involvement in special interest groups such as home builders associations, real estate boards, environmental advocates, or neighborhood groups does not automatically create actual conflicts of interest, the perception or appearance of bias may arise," close quote. So I would just conclude my comments here by asking my council callings to remember that we are being asked to address a concern raised by a large group of citizens who witnessed events giving rise to the concern. We don't want to take issue with the concern. That's not our role. Our role, and if you do not agree with the recommendation proposed by the ad hoc committee, which is perfectly fine, then I would suggest when the item comes before council, if you have a proposed alternative mitigation strategy, that you bring that before the council for consideration. And certainly, if it's well thought out and well based, I would think that the council could consider an alternative recommendation, an alternative from the recommendation that's before us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Council Hewitt?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. For the record, I'd like to weigh in on the proposed policy change regarding who may serve as chair or vice chair of the planning board. I understand the concern about conflicts of interest. We all value the integrity in our boards, and recusal exists for that exact reason. However, prohibiting an entire profession, specifically realtors, from leadership roles goes well beyond managing conflicts. It begins to narrow the board in a way that unintentionally removes people who actually understand land use, development patterns, and the realities of our housing market. If we start banning every profession that could possibly encounter a conflict, we would need to excuse realtors, developers, contractors, tradespeople, engineers, architects, surveyors, and even bankers. At that point, we would struggle to fill the board with anyone who has real-world experience, which is what a planning board needs most. The goal should not be to avoid expertise. The goal should be to manage conflicts responsibly when they arise. Main law already provides a straightforward mechanism for disclosure and recusal, and that process works. It preserves trust without shutting the door to the entire groups of qualified residents. I encourage us to consider a policy that focuses on transparency and recusal rather than board exclusions. We want a planning board that reflects the community, brings diverse knowledge to the table, and can lead effectively. A blanket ban on certain professions does the opposite. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, I guess, join in the voices that are skeptical of some of these changes. I don't need to reiterate what was said during the public comment, nor Council Hewitt's thoughtful words. I would just add a few points. We do already have mechanisms in place, right? We limit the number of people who can serve in the same profession to two, already taking into account this. We have mechanisms for recusal, have been said a couple of times. But what hasn't, I think, been focused on yet is the fact that during the appointment process itself, we can weigh in on the qualifications as well as the current makeup of the board. If we feel the board is heavily weighed in one direction or the other, we can simply not accept an application to the planning board. And similarly, we have that same opportunity in the chair and co-chair. There are adequate current provisions in our code of ethics and our appointment procedures, I believe, to handle all of these things. I continue to be concerned also that this is in response to a particular application and a particular makeup of the board, and those things are no longer present. The board, new members have joined the board, others have stepped down. That application is no longer being considered. This strikes me as a permanent change to a temporary situation, and one that I just don't believe is merited. I do find a couple of things worthy of further consideration. I think an attorney representing the planning board who has a partner on the planning board, well, I hope that situation would be rare, and I believe if there are conflicts, they should be noted, and perhaps recusal, if we believe language there is needed. I can certainly understand perhaps why. But the number of professions that could potentially benefit or lose as a result of a particular development is just simply astronomical. I've spoken about that at length previously. We're picking on this one based on a particular circumstance that I believe no longer exists, and I'm pretty skeptical of these changes.
Thank you. City Administrator Prescott, you have the notes, the comments down?
Yes, I have the notes.
Okay, so this will be brought back at a future council meeting. And it has been assigned to Councilor Johnson at this point. Okay, moving on to item C, and that is the update to the supported entities request
Michelle Beasley, our executive assistant, did a great job pulling from what other municipalities require for requesting supported entity funds from this, from different municipalities. I believe a lot of this is modeled off the City of Biddeford's application for funding. This was a request that councilors had made to city staff to have a more specific process on how to make these requests, not just a one-page letter or a few pages of information that was submitted. So we have put, Michelle's put this together. I think it's a great first draft to get us started. Happy to take any comments for edits or revisions, so we can get those put together and put this on a future one-reading item in preparation for our upcoming budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city administrator, and thank you, Michelle Beasley, for getting this started. I think it's a really important process to formalize this more, to seek more information, and to create a more coherent strategy. So I absolutely appreciate the goals and agree this is a good first draft. I do have some concerns about the details, and I can lay out kind of my overall concern and then some specific details also. I think my overarching concern is, I think there's too many questions. Some of them are redundant, and some of them may not apply to particular organizations. So I appreciate the goal of trying to get this information, but I think it may create some unnecessary hurdles and confusion. I think the first page is great. I think we need to know that information. Same at the top part of the second page. But when we start to get to the program description, I wonder if the first three questions maybe could be combined. The need the program addresses, how that need is determined, and how the program is attempting to meet the need, I think maybe it could be one question to avoid some of the redundancy there. I think the question about evaluating the effectiveness deserves to be by itself. When we move on to the next page, client eligibility criteria, I think that will be confusing to some of our organizations. For example, I'm thinking about Saco Main Street. I don't know, they think of themselves as having clients who are eligible. The library might be similar, as might many of our organizations. The services provided, described services provided is probably covered under the questions on that earlier page. The next question about maintaining a facility in Saco, I don't know if that's the key question, or if the key question is, do you serve residents of the City of Saco? Whether or not they maintain a structure may not be the critical barrier. Define a unit of service as it pertains to the program. Again, I'm not sure I understand what that means, and I'm worried, you know, the nonprofits I'm involved with won't either. And I think that same kind of logic can be applied throughout, just to make sure the terms we're using and the information we're trying to seek can be kind of simplified. The budget stuff, I thought, was all very appropriate. I think we want to understand the money coming in and out of these programs. So that was appropriate. Similarly, what are your other sources of income, and how do you collaborate? I thought all of those questions were very appropriate. So I'm happy to document some of that if it's helpful. I don't know if Emily got that there. You got it? Okay. Oh. But overall, very positive about the process, very positive about what we're trying to do. I just want to make sure the questions will be non-redundant and clearly answerable by the variety of entities that apply to us.
Thank you. And that was actually a question that we are going to address is if our quasi-judicial style, Dyer Library, Saco Main Street, V-SUB, age-friendly, if they would be required, or if there will be a varied version of the application for those entities. So that, we're going to be putting that forward as well as a question. Anyone else? Council Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just a couple of comments. One, if we harken back to the budget discussion we had on this issue back in May, I think we were somewhat overwhelmed by the increase in the requests that we faced. We cast a vote to ratchet everything back to last year's level, which I recall passed unanimously, and then we reopened the window and we gave some money to another organization. I'm going to say now what I said then, and that is that I, as we get closer and closer to economic struggles for our taxpayers, we hear it every day, that I don't think personally and philosophically that city government should be a charitable-giving foundation. I don't think that a city council should decide to give tax dollars to a nonprofit organization to go through this process, because I don't think that's a fair and reasonable use of proceeds, of tax proceeds. Now, everybody on this dais, is probably, myself included, are very generous in terms of supporting our choice of nonprofit organizations, whether it's with money or time or both. And that's a decision, I think, that should rest with us individually. Otherwise, what's to say that every 501(c)(3) shouldn't be part of the budget if we're going to go down that path? So I have a very strong opposition to, and I'm excluding the quasi-municipal organizations that we identified, the mayor just identified. I think that's a whole different discussion point. But I am really strongly opposed to continuing giving money to these nonprofit organizations. And that's, I have to tell you that that's some of the feedback I'm getting from some of my like-minded constituents. So that being said, if we move forward with this, I would like to suggest that the de minimis amount of $5,000 on page one of the application be reduced to 1,000. one of the application be reduced to 1,000, which would increase the level of scrutiny that the requested would have to provide the council for consideration. I would agree with Counselor Berman that there's probably opportunity here to combine some of these questions into one. I would also suggest that, I can't get a page reference for it, I think it's the third page, there's a question that says, "Does your agency collaborate with any other nonprofit?" I think that's a really good question, because one of the things that does concern me in this charitable-giving environment is that we should strive to avoid what I would call somewhat wasteful duplication, where you've got multiple agencies doing the same thing with two different sets of management teams, and trying to be a little bit more efficient with the money so that the beneficiaries get the benefit. And that, I think that collaboration question should be expanded to include what collaboration efforts have been made with our general assistance office, because we do provide a significant amount of money, justifiably so, to our general assistance office each year. In fact, we had a fairly sizable increase to the budget this current year. And I think that collaboration question should be broad, but also capture the specifics of what, if any, collaboration do we have going on with our GA office. And then at the bottom of that same third page, I agree with the copy of your 501(c)(3) form, but I think we should refer to that as your 501(c)(3) authorization letter from the IRS. And that's really the ticket to nonprofit status, and a copy of that should be readily available if it exists. Other than that, I think I'm good at this point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. This will be brought back to council on an upcoming agenda. So that completes the new business items. Item 11 is administrative update.
Thank you. We have launched a community resource list. With the ongoing federal government shutdown and SNAP benefits in flux for November, we understand that there is uncertainty and creating, and that is creating some concern and hardship for some in our community. While the city's general assistance program, saco main.org/generalsistance, offers resources to community members in need, there are also many community partners working hard to make sure everyone has access to food and other essentials. If you or someone you know needs a helping hand, several food distribution events, meal programs, and other forms of support are available in the coming weeks. Visit our general assistance webpage for a timely list, plus a full list of year-round community resources provided by Saco Police Department's Community Engagement Specialist. Veterans Day is tomorrow, and we're looking forward to honoring service members through Heart of Bitterford's annual Bitterford-Saco Veterans Day Parade. The parade will begin with an opening ceremony at 9:30 a.m. at Mechanics Park in Bitterford. At 10 a.m., the lineup will leave the park and proceed across the bridge and up the hill on Main Street into Saco, turning right onto Beach Street, and finally turning left into Middle Street for our closing ceremony at C.K. Burns School. All roadways will reopen promptly following the clearing of the parade. Find out more information on Heart of Bitterford's website, and please note, city offices and the Saco transport station will be closed in observance of the holiday. Trash collection will continue as scheduled, and city services remain available online at saco main.org/onlineservices. We had the Exit 35 open on November 3rd. Main Turnpike Authority's first new exit in more than 20 years. It's designed to improve connections to and from the turnpike, providing easier turnpike access to Westerly traffic, reducing peak travel congestion along Route 112 and Industrial Park, and reducing traffic at Exit 36. Community members with feedback can reach the Main Turnpike Authority Administrative Line at 207-871-1771. Deputy Fire Chief Robert Martin retires. After more than 37 years of dedicated service to the City of Saco, Deputy Fire Chief Robert Martin retired on October 30th, 2025. Deputy Chief Martin began his career with Saco Fire in 1988 and has served with distinction in nearly every capacity, from firefighter to fire officer to executive leadership. His career has been marked by unwavering dedication to the department, the growth and development of Saco's personnel, and the protection of our community. Deputy Martin's retirement marks the end of an era for this department. On behalf of the City of Saco and the men and women of the Fire Department, we extend our deepest gratitude and wish him and his family nothing but health, happiness, and a well-deserved retirement. We have a solo permitting update from code enforcement. We've seen an uptick in residential solo permit applications, likely due to the December 31 expiration of the Residential Clean Energy Credit from the federal government. While the code enforcement team is actively processing a variety of residential and commercial building applications, their time is also required for various other matters, including but limited, not limited to plan reviews, questions, code compliance. As such, they cannot guarantee that solo permit applications submitted after November 9th will be processed by December 31st. So if you have questions about this and timelines, I'd encourage you to reach out to the Code Enforcement Department. Fair Road and Seaside Avenue Resiliency Improvement Project, RFP, Public Works received bids for the Fair Road and Seaside Avenue Resiliency Improvement Project on Friday, October 24th, and the bid tabulations can be found on the city's website under the New Business section. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to item 12, that is council discussion and comments. Any councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Hewitt?
I just want to give a thank you. The Elks was mentioned on the agenda tonight, and they're a major benefactor for the Maine Children's Cancer Program. Last year, they raised $380,000 statewide. Monthly, they donate their hall to the Red Cross for blood drives and allow age-friendly Saco to use their facilities for luncheons. They support the local backpack programs in schools and the food pantries. They have donated coats to homeless veterans and bedding for seeds of hope. The Elks are definitely an unsung hero in our community, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I would like to just say thank you to our city clerk's office and her group of volunteers for another successful and very large turnout on Election Day last Tuesday, and would like to congratulate our two new councilors who will be joining us on December 1st, Jeff Onan, who will be replacing Mike Berman for Council Four, and Will Gale, who will be replacing Counselor Hatch for Ward Five. We're going to miss you guys both, but we welcome Jeff and Will. And again, just thank you to our clerk's office. They always do an amazing job for residents on Election Day. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item 13, that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 5-0 at 7:19. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.